She's on.
He doesn't appear to be on Zoom.
On Zoom, Anthony.
Brian. Yeah.
If you look on the screen, it looks like. All in the opposite.
All in the opposite. Ten next.
Yeah.
Hey, does it? Your next thing, yours.
What?
The only one that looks like the second. Probably all the names that.
You never know.
Are you jealous or just say so?
Kathy.
Yeah.
You're okay there? Last person.
I think so.
First off, before I called the meeting to order, on Zoom, we have City Manager Anthony McGinnis, Councillor Landmark, Councillor Fountain, Councillor Valentino. And we have regret from Councillor McMurdo.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, just giving you a heads up that when I turn my camera on, I'm having issues. So I've got my camera off. My connection's really bad, so.
Okay. No wind cameras, so I don't think that's an issue, right? Also.
No.
Thank you. Yes.
Are we doing the public hearing first or?
Yes. Okay, so I. First, we have public hearing on the 25th of May, 2021, for zoning bylaw 2012-2021. Called this meeting to order. Uh, we have supporting documents for bylaw 2012-2021. Amendment for accessory buildings. Go to administration.
Oh, yes, your worship, I can address this. Um, this is a proposed bylaw, zoning bylaw amendment. To change the minimum setbacks required for accessory buildings in the single touch residential zone, the R1 zone, as well as the semi-detached residential zone R2. Um, currently, there's a number of setbacks that are required from the side yards and backyards. These were brought in in 2012, um, and has caused a lot of delays in development, um, since it was brought into place. Um, the way the city was originally designed, um, there's a lot of the yards that really struggle to, uh, build accessory buildings that meet the changes. Uh, what's being proposed is, um, several modifications to the bylaw that would allow that if it's sixty-five and a half feet back, that, uh, you could have a three-foot side yard rather than the, uh, the other seven and a half, uh, sorry, twenty-five foot. My apology, six-foot side yard. These changes would be consistent with the previous zoning bylaw amendment, eleven-twenty dash eighty-three, that was in place before the current one came in. Uh, this has been brought to the Development Review Committee, as recommended for to council for approval. This currently is the public hearings portion of the, uh, meeting, so anyone in the gallery can step forward and make representations in support or against, or online as well. And I will note that there are no other people attending online as far as I can see.
Thank you, and we've received no written, uh, notifications?
Uh, to date, we've not received any written email for or against.
Thank you. So now we will, uh, go on to, uh, the gallery. If there's any presentations in favor or opposed to the change of this bylaw, please come forward, uh, state your name and why you're for or opposed to it. For the second time, we're receiving presentations in favor or opposed to the changes in this bylaw. Third and final time, we're receiving presentations in favor or opposition to this changes in this bylaw. Seeing none, uh, well, if quote the, uh, receiving presentations is closed, uh, I'll call for adjournment. Councillor, uh, Colburn, Councillor Ellsworth, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Open carry. We will now move on to our regular meeting of council. May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Again, I have regrets from Councillor McMurdo. In the, in the, on Zoom, we have, uh, City Manager Anthony McGinnis, Councillor Landmark, Councillor Fountain, and Councillor Valentino. I would like to, uh, recognize that we are on thirty-five land and that we are all thirty-five people. Next, I'll go for approval of the agenda.
Very.
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, submit my written motion, receipt. Resolution two zero two one zero seven zero. And another written, uh, written motion, we say by bylaw two zero one one dash two zero twenty-one. Thank you.
So these will move forward to the next council meeting.
In the case where those need a second, or I second those motions.
Pardon?
If in the case that needs a second or to move forward, I would be, I would serve as second or.
Uh, no, we don't, thank you. Okay, uh, so with that, uh, we have the approval of the agenda, uh, the, uh, Tommy, the motion to approve the agenda. Yeah, I mean, there's got, okay, I had a motion to approve the agenda. Councillor Colburn, Councillor Ellsworth, all in favor. That's where I had buttoned to.
Hi.
Real good. Real good.
Okay, uh, we're going to go to, uh, community comments and feedback. Uh, is there any person that wishes to speak? State your name and.
Wrong, not a truck, twenty eighth street. Uh, on the check register, uh, I'm wondering, check number zero zero three two five eight six, written out the Canadian Tire and the amount of one thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents for.
Uh, basically, it's when there's, uh, things picked up, uh, the workers have appeals and it goes to Canadian Tire and then the appeals are all set at eight on once a month.
So I can't get specifics?
I think you can if, uh, he can give you specifics. I'm just not ready at this moment, but I, it is zero zero three two five eight six.
That's right.
Okay, I will.
Okay.
Anything else, sir? Uh, any other comments, community feedback? Third and final time, any more comments or community feedback? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Our document, Minister. Resolution two zero two one zero seven six, moved by Councillor Colburn, second of Councillor Prue. We resolved at the minutes of the regular meeting of council, held in council chamber, City Hall, Council of Manitoba, on Monday, May tenth, twenty twenty-one, we adopted a circulating. Administration?
Oh, nothing further.
And councillors? Call for the question, all those in favor? Okay, opposed?
Right.
You're in favor?
No.
You're opposed? Okay. What was on, was everybody? Okay, the carry. Next, we have, uh, the report, AMM, AMM report. Councillor Valentino?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smoke. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to provide a update on AMM for the public and for councillors, otherwise known as the Association of Manitoba Municipalities, as our Northern District Meeting will be on June sixteenth, so it's been one year since, since we met in the North. So just for a little bit of an update for our public, uh, myself and Karen McKinnon, City Councillor for the City of Flintlon are the two Northern Directors on the AMM Board. We represent a hundred and thirty-seven municipalities in our province. Um, our mission is to identify and address the needs and concerns of our members to achieve strong and effective municipal government. So in the past year, we've had the opportunity, well, the past two years actually have been on here, that we've had the opportunity to speak with the town of Slinl- Snow Lake, Lynn Lake, Grand Rapids, the Paw. Twenty twenty, we were supposed to meet in person with the City of Thompson. Unfortunately, with COVID, we couldn't. And this year, we were supposed to meet in person in the Paw, and unfortunately, it's going to be virtual again in June for our meeting. This past year, we've had, uh, was our elections, so we have a new president. It is the Reeve Cam Blight for the RM of Portage de Prairie. We have two vice presidents, Chris Ewen, who's the mayor and RM of Rashot, and Brad Saluk, who's the Reeve RM of Brokenhead. We work similar to a structure as mayor and council. Our president is our spokesperson for AMM, uh, with our executive director. So everything, even when we give our updates and our director reports, everything is public information and it's on our Association of Manitoba Municipalities website. So I really encourage councillors and, um, other communities and even the public to read and see the things that we, we work on on behalf of municipalities. Um, this past year, um, we've also had the opportunity to discuss with the province, obviously, about COVID nineteen, the provincial budget, the Provincial Strategic Collaboration Group, uh, the ISIP, which you, we talk a lot about, is the Investing Canada Infrastructure Program. All of our provincial municipalities are waiting desperately to see what the grants are. And that's one thing I can say that I really learned is that all of, all of the issues that we have within our municipalities are all the same, whether it be infrastructure, policing costs, uh, recreation, the degrees of the issues are maybe different, but we all struggle with the same, uh, the same issues throughout our province. We've talked a lot about, um, the DFA, which is the Disaster Financial Assistance, um, and how the formula is calculated within the province, Bill forty-eight, which is a hot topic. Um, the public can see that City of Thompson, we meet as a planning district before our meetings. Bill forty-eight, which has now been changed to another bill number, would directly, uh, have a change in how we, uh, operate and make decisions, the planning district. So that's been a top priority for AMM this year. The provincial drainage regulations is also an issue, and our code of conduct, which has now come to fruition with municipalities that councillors, uh, have to, mayor then councils and see, mayors and councillors across the province have to take a code of conduct training. We meet monthly as a board, uh, for the City of Thompson on our Liga and Financing Finance Committee. It's a standing agenda topic. So as we move to advocate for things, uh, if I know of anything at that point, that's where it's discussed within our city. Uh, we also offer through Western Financial General Insurance that we encourage all of our municipalities to take advantage of, and AMM also offers a trading company, which we, uh, try to, uh, hope that a lot of our municipalities understand and take advantage, and that's directly related a lot to even purchasing, uh, of equipment and capital, capital, uh, things that a municipality might want to buy for an asset. Uh, some points of interest for our upcoming Northern District Meeting in June, the agenda is posted, and we will have the ability to have the Honorable Minister Clark speak to us. So I'm hoping that all of our council can attend. She is the Minister of Indigenous and Northern Relations. So when I talk about our president being the spokesperson, all of our, um, speaking points to ministers that we try to have lined up once per calendar year that our president will meet with a minister. Those, uh, those paid, those policies or, or pages are on the website. And recently, with the Minister of Indigenous and Northern Relations, the position papers posted and we met, or they met with her on February of twenty twenty-one, and it directly related to two priority items for Northern Manitoba. So, uh, one was about economic development. So we have asked the AMM to have the minister's office consult with northern communities on the implement, implementation of the Look North Initiative and a Northern Economic Development Strategy. And our other priority item that our, our president spoke to was that AMM recommends the government provide financial and consultive support to assist municipalities in developing service sharing agreements with First Nation communities, as well as through the TLE process. And all the points are, are all online that lead up to what our priority items are. So that's kind of in a nutshell of, of how we position things and how we operate and how the year has been. And I really encourage, uh, all of our council, and I know there's other municipalities that follow our, our council meetings that, uh, they take advantage of our Northern District Meeting on June sixteenth. And, uh, and any of the other issues you'll see are all posted on the AMM website. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? I was, uh, Kathy under report?
The meeting virtual or in person?
Virtual.
Kathy, your meetings are virtual?
Yeah. Unfortunately, we still are virtual and we're, you know, in November is always our annual convention and we're still, struggling with that, whether it'll be virtual or not, it would be for the City of Brandon, I believe, turned to host. And, uh, they, their convention center is being used as a vaccine site, so it's still one of the topics and, and decision-making points that, uh, that our executive is working on, but this northern meeting will be virtual, yes. And I do believe that, um, we are all registered, I hope.
Yes, Angela has registered us all. Thank you.
I have a quick question with, uh, Councillor Valentino, or? Councillor Valentino, I remember when, when we went to the, uh, annual meeting in, in Winnipeg, our first, uh, year, uh, we were to meet with, uh, some ministers, and I know that's not regular for the northern or for this time of year, but, um, in, in the virtual meetings, do you think there's an opportunity for us to have, uh, one-on-one or will I count with, uh, minister? Or is that just for in the winter there when we do the annual?
Um, I think you're asking, or Mayor Smoke, if I may answer?
Yes.
So I, I think what I'm hearing is you're asking me is if there's an ability for the City of Thompson to request one-on-one meetings with ministers?
Yeah.
They. And. Okay, so we, so Councillor Landmark, we always have the ability to do that as a City of Thompson. First would be through the minister's office to request those kind of virtual meetings. We can do that within our own. If there is a, um, a lobbying effort that we as a city, uh, would like assistance with or background material or background information or stats, we could use the AMM office to help provide us with more of a, a case or background information we would need to have a minister's meeting. We can also ask AMM to support, um, the request if we're not getting anywhere, if, if, if there's some kind of a dire need, I guess, to speak with a, a minister or minister's, uh, deputy.
Okay, Mayor Smoke, can I get a say something? Sorry, I, I guess what I, I misspoke, I was, when we went to the annual meeting before they had set aside times for different ministers and stuff, sorry, I mixed it up, um. I just thought, we just booked time with them. I, I know that we can meet, but, uh, thank you.
Now, last fall, actually, at the, for the November meeting, actually, a number of meetings that we did book meetings with, uh, some of the ministers right around that time, we met in council chambers and, and met through Zoom with, uh, two or three of the ministers last fall. So that, we had the spring one, at the June one, uh, it's just whoever comes out to that meeting, like in this case, uh, Minister Clark, uh, that we meet with, but as you, as we, Kathy said, we can actually request meetings with any of the ministers at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other on that? Uh, six point two is, uh, check registers. Yes, Duncan.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of requests. Check numbers zero zero three two five four one. Eighteen thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Can I have the administration breaking down what that for? Like, what exactly the machine that going to?
Where, what two is that made of?
Tormond cap. It's pretty large number. This few months, I seen a lot of those. So which is that did it last time to break it down, what machine? So at least we, since we don't have the maintenance report. Uh, second request, check number zero zero three two five six six. And, uh, is making to, uh, make it to, uh, the lawyer. Thirty-one thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. So I also like to, uh, have a breakdown and submit to all of us to take a look. And it seems like getting a, a pretty significant for lawyer fee every month, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councillor.
Can I ask why we don't have our City Financial Office where to answer questions? We go over check register, what is it? Not, not every meeting? It's, uh, it's over a three million dollar check register, and nobody here to give answers in that part. I'm a little concerned that we as an elected body, here's our opportunity to ask questions. We can ask them, but you no one here to clarify or give back to us on that.
Okay.
Kathy has a stand-up?
Oh.
Kathy.
Anthony.
Uh, yes, your worship, um, so one of those ones with the, uh, MLT Akins that, um, we're currently in negotiations on collective bargaining, and there's some, uh, cost associated with that, but as always, we can provide breakdowns of all these. Um, our CFO is not here tonight because she presented the check registers at the last finance meeting, but any questions that council ever wants, uh, from these reports, we can get that information back to council.
Thank you. Anything further? Anybody on Zoom, Councillor Hunter?
Me, oh, sorry, excuse me, sorry.
Okay. Uh. Russ?
Yeah, so, so I was at the, and, uh, finance, and I asked, uh, a number of questions with the financial board, do, shall I take the time and vote through while I receive it? And they were answered. A question wasn't about, uh, one or two of us showing up, and yes, there's an opportunity, but again, um, I'm not going to debate it all night. I won't keep here till eleven, as much as I'd like to. But I believe someone of such importance on a three million dollar check register, they should be here to answer questions of those councillors for whatever reason that can't make it. And for them to have to wait and go back, uh, certainly, it's errors information. I remember before my time on council, used to ask resolution. And I will tell you, if we're not going to have someone here to answer questions, maybe I have to go back to a resolution again. And I'm not saying that's conducive to, uh, good behavior or anything else in council, but, uh, we need someone here to answer questions when brought up by other councillors that can't be at the finance, and so I'll leave it at uncertainty discipline.
Thank you. Uh, I know we're all sent out the check registers, so that if we do have questions, uh, the questions that have been asked here tonight wouldn't have had answers on the spot anyway due to the breakdowns, that there's many components of it, but, uh, we'll definitely, uh, take your concerns under consideration. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, mayor, uh, so, let me make something very clear. The questions that we're doing due diligence as elected body, that's our job to make sure that everything is all okay, and I'm not saying it's not. But by asking the questions, we show the public that elected us, that we do read it, we are concerned about it. That's what it's all about. It's not about a check register sent to the elected body that will look, you're absolutely right, I'm not, I'm not arguing that. I'm saying you have to show the public that we're doing our due diligence as, as an elected body, and that's my concern.
Thank you. And I do believe the public has access to the, uh, check registers also. Uh, with the agenda, the breakdown. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Uh, next, we're going to go into correspondence. Uh, House was brought up, uh, economic impact report on the Winter Games. It is a thirty-six page report, so I am not going to go through it, but I will, uh, maybe, uh, if I'm not putting, uh, Councillor Valentino on the spot, do you want to maybe, uh, say a couple of words on it as you were part of the committee?
Thank you, Mayor Smoke. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to keep bringing this up, but I think it was worth clarifying for the public, and I think it's also worth us, um, understanding the importance of hosting events within our city. And as we move through, getting through this pandemic and, and hopefully coming to an end to it sometime, that, uh, we as a city with whatever user group or community-led group we have, we need to encourage them to host provincial events because it definitely is a benefit to our city economically, mentally, and it definitely helps all of our user groups. So I wanted to really clarify the points that have been brought up in the last couple of council meetings and hope that as a community that we can support each other and we can, uh, move forward with any opportunities that might come up that we can host events in the future, because it's definitely something that our city has the ability to do and we do a really good job at it. So this economic impact assessment has already been before mayor and council in twenty eighteen, but I thought it was important again to clarify four key points. One is where you are from, that there was approximately thirty-two hundred people that were not from Thompson that attended the games. And I also want to, uh, also point out that, um, this average spending by an attendee that attended our games was six hundred, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and that's what they spent on, um, other means of transportation, a vehicle, gas, the rental of vehicle, what they spent at the venue they were at, whether it be for entertainment or, uh, buying something at the concession, whatever it may have been, their average spend for retail and shopping, their average spend for food and beverage, and their average spend for accommodations. So definitely a benefit. They spent money when they came here to our city. The third point is the spending of an out-of-town athlete, their family member, spectator, and other visitors was, uh, an expense that was brought into our community. They spent a total of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in direct spending within our city when they were here. And the very last thing on the, um, assessment, economic assessment that was brought is on the very last page where it says how we can improve our visitor experience. And I think that this is a very important page that we, we, um, should always refer to if we're looking to host events again in the future, because it tells what we can do better. Um, and some of the things were the other opportunities for improving the visitor experience, improving, uh, personal safety, the ease and cost of transportation. So there's some very good, uh, points at the end on how we can always do better as a city and as a community when we host things. Um, it's important to note that in two thousand and sixteen, the resolution that passed was for us to, in order to host these games, we had to make a commitment as a city of seventy-five thousand for operating and seventy-five thousand for capital, and mayor and council at the time did pass that resolution, so we were able to host the, these games that were a requirement. The legacy left behind for this in our city was a grand total of four hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, and that is identified in the, in the last bit of correspondence at a previous meeting that we had, and that tells you everything up and to, right to, um, you know, uh, medical kits that were bought and cable ties for the ski hill and for the, uh, Artie Parker volleyball. So it was broken down right into detail. It was definitely a benefit to have this, and it was definitely a physical and a financial legacy for our city. I just want to be clear that this was a positive thing, and it's a good thing moving forward that we can host things in this city, whatever it may be. And moving forward, I, I want that to be the perception that the City of Thompson and our community and our user groups, they need to look at events that we can host here because it's definitely a benefit when we have visitors come to our city, a benefit for all. So I just wanted to clarify some points from the past. Thank you, Mayor Smoke.
Thank you. Uh, go to Anthony. Did you have any comments?
I don't know, nothing further.
I vote a council. Any comments, Councillor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know it's a good thing, because I'm one of the person that put up the hand and agreed with this, uh, event. Pretty much unanimous at that time when we approved. The concern I have is the leadership that's misled us, this objective of having this. I mean, okay, let me clarify the one part first. It's a good event. As a citizen of Thompson, that is a good thing. But as a taxpayer, remember this, this is what the mayor told us is going to be benefit, is going to be profit, not benefit, profit to the sea. So my interpretation, it will be, we invest two hundred and fifty thousand, we should have at least two hundred and fifty thousand back. But at the end, it manipulate by organization, we only get back sixteen thousand. Other distribution, I'm not doubt about, I'm not argue about, that you could get a benefit. Okay, I'm not, I'm not passionate about it. But one question I like to ask about the methodology of this company that do the research, based on three hundred and seventy-one people. How many of three hundred and seventy one people that come from Thompson? That do the survey to say, yeah, we benefit. We as a business, I as a business, I do not benefit a single dollar. Okay, I have a person came to me. Okay, they say we bought whole bunch of chocolate milk, milk as a grocery store, two hundred over. Just just to ready for this event, guess what? They end up throw to the garbage, because not even one box of chocolate milk sold. A lot of number came out, I get it. Where did my number come from? Out of Thompson, they brought people from Thompson, they brought the grocery, they brought the chef come up from Winnipeg. To cook for all this applicant spec. So. I'm not against this event, I think we should host more this event, it's just the way the the mayor that told us. They're trying to make this happen, and then later on, just give us a little bit of information, little bit of information. To me, when you have to brag about three, four times about the event, something wrong with this report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a few points on that, because. We we put in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to host this. And. The total physical legacy value was two hundred and sixty two thousand, the total financial legacy was a hundred and sixty thousand. The total amount of money that was brought into our community was a direct benefit to our city of Thompson taxpayers. When you have to talk about an event being successful three or four times, it means the event was successful. And when Manitoba Sport Manitoba runs an event and brings up a chef because they're running the event. And when Gardwine, a local manager here, works as hard as he did with his in kind donation to help facilitate how this event was put on. That's a benefit and something to talk about that's good. So I I disagree with your comments, and this was a well run event. And I will, I will stand by the value. Financially and physical, mentally, and for the benefit of this community on how this event took place. How we were asked to put it on. And to those of us, to those of us that actually took part in it and were volunteers, we clearly understand. What took place to run this, and we know that it wasn't about chocolate milk, I can tell you that. I can tell you it was about all the volunteers, the thirteen hundred people that signed up and were a part of this event. They were the ones, and they're the ones that are very happy with the legacy that was left behind. I don't think that there's any need further to discuss this Manitoba Games, except that the city of Thompson is the legacy for the last games that was held. And it will be moving forward, something that Sport Manitoba and the province looks at in hosting games in the future. And they've already asked us to be a part of how we put on these games in such a first class society and a first class organization that ran this.
Okay.
I'd like to respond there. Counselor Valentino is the only elected official appointed to the board of director of this winter game. Of course, you got to defend that, okay, number two. They're talking about in kind donation, so what actually the impact and benefit does, I don't know, I don't see it. And I like to see a one piece of invoice come from local business. That. Make money from this event, the number all one for one million dollars, I never seen the evidence to prove it. I never seen it, all I'm asking is like, show me the evidence. And again, I want to make myself clear, I'm not saying this is a bad event. I think it's a good event for as a citizen of Thompson. But as a taxpayer, my interpretation is. Why do money have to be distributed by third party, not us as elected official? We should have a say to how this distributed money. We put up the money, we should come back to the city and let the city decide, but this is not the case. The elected third party, of course, they have to make a. A report to show that it's very valuable, it's very, I'm not saying it's not. But the way it comes down, I have a problem. As elected official, we put a resolution as a taxpayer money, they should come back to the city and let the city decide the four hundred thousand dollars how we distribute. Okay, period, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we as a city did get to.
Sixty thousand dollars?
We actually came correct for the last money, so we at the rec department. We did decide how this money was going to be spent and where it was going to be spent this year. As for the things that were going into it, we were updated on a regular basis by the committee. For the heaters and the board and beer and some of the other things that were happening. We were updated along the way, and I attended and saw pickets all through the event. And it was definitely a well attended and well spoke about event by both the citizens and Thompson and that, so. That said, I we're going to close.
Last point.
I would like the last point, please, Mayor Smokey, I've had my hand up.
Okay, I think I think we are going to.
Order.
Yes.
You already declared that the debate was over, yes, over.
That's what I'm just saying, sir. With that being said, I had already said that we were finished, so we will, you may discuss this after or in. Another committee, thank you very much. Next, we're going to move into resolutions. Eight point one is a notice of motion to rescind resolution two zero two one zero seven three. For the purchase of polymer for the waste water treatment plant, I will give administration.
Sure, yes, your worship, um, last council meeting, the council passed resolution twenty twenty one zero seven three for the purchase of polymer. For use of the wastewater treatment plant, subsequent to passing that resolution. The financial department identified that there was an error made in the purchasing department on information presented to council. So the numbers are correct and the company names are correct, but they're transposed, which means that resolution has to be corrected. Which means it has to be withdrawn, so this is a notice that at the next meeting, there will be a resolution to withdraw. And then another resolution to be brought forward to order to the proper company.
Thank you, any questions on that?
So just to be clear, the. The company in discussion there will not be awarded because of some some problem, they're correct.
I don't have the fine details, it's either the company or the dollar amount would be different, but it would come back to council for approval.
If you may, I don't think the committee can do the receipt, got to be one of the elected official somehow. I think someone got to put the name there to do the receipt. I reconserve with the province. Only council allowed to do receipt, not committee, they can recommend, but someone. Has to do that physically. As elected official, could be come from the finance, one of the council, they can do that. Because under here, you say member of legal and finance, you're not allowed to do that, it's a council resolution.
Yes, I believe this motion would have been moved and seconded, so it would have been moved by a counselor, would have been seconded. Be prepared by the administration on behalf of the committee, but to be in front of council to have to be moved and seconded.
Actually, this is coming forth from Counselor Valentino.
I already asked the MSO, they said have to be.
I spoke with the MSO as well, and they said that this is correct.
So Kathy actually brought it forward to rescind. Correct, okay.
Just a point, and if that's the case, then you've got an elected council, I get that. But there is in the committee, as we know, committee members. So long as it was my committee member from the community or whatever, it was elected official, I'm reading that. I get it, but not if you clarify it, it's fine, but we got to keep that in mind, it's a good point. That we can't have community members doing it, I don't think we can. Because it was done by an electoral official, I believe, or a.
Yeah, it's just a point, maybe because underneath the same member of legal, so I'm concerned if I come from a medical official, definitely agree.
I came from Counselor Valentino and Counselor Linnmar, who are members of the just later than one.
Thank you, are we okay with that? So that will come forward next. Eight point two is a resume to approve the tabulation of prices for the purchase of firefighter permit gear. Resolution two zero two one zero seven seven, moved by. Counselor Elsward, seconded by Counselor Pro. It resolved that council approved the recommendation of the purchasing agent. And award the purchase of firefighter turnout gear to ABC Fire and Safety with the financial implication of fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty seven dollars and sixty cents. With additional taxes as per tender file number one one oh two one, for the administration.
Oh, yes, your worship, this is part of a multi year plan from the fire department to replace the turnout gear. Every year, a number identified for a placement so that all the gear are kept within the N F P A standards. For this year, there were two bidders, one bidder clearly came out ahead of time or in front. And there's a recommendation for the purchase in the resolution before council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, in fact, it's a good thing that we should be doing, and it's like if you. Read the notes that was provided, I believe we are cheaper than we were last year in twenty twenty by a hundred and forty one dollars per cent. So absolutely, it always worries me when the company is called ABC. But no, absolutely, I'm so in support of this, I think it's a great thing.
I might be mistaken, but is that not a local company?
ABC?
No, okay.
Anybody else on Zoom? Okay, we'll call for the question, all those in favor? Eight point three is a reservation to endorse Counselor Valentino as the Northern District rep to the AMM Board. I think she was the only one when Angie sent out to put in a request. I guess at this time, if there's anybody else who need to move her and second her to add your name to the reservation. I'm going to read it as it is.
Is it freezing?
No, no.
Brian, you want to speak?
Yep, this the, does this need to be moved? Or is it moved? Does it need to be moved? Or is it already there?
Okay, if someone else wanted to put their name in, right?
Oh, we're just no, we're asking. We all needed to put their name, I'll read the resolution and then we can talk, just anything after resolution two zero two one zero seven eight reads. Moved by Counselor Pro, seconded by. Counselor Polburn, whereas the association of Manhole the municipality is comprised of marriage reeds and counselors. And represents the citizens of Vanas Pobas Incorporated, and whereas each region of AMM has two representatives. Now therefore, it results that council of the city of Thompson endorses Kathy Counselor Valentino. To let her name stand as the Northern Director to the AMM Board of Directors. Go to administration.
Not too much further, your worship, this is a process that the city of Thompson use to endorse any of the candidates to go forward. The actual election of the of the representative will take place at AMM's district meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Pro.
Not much to add, just. Good to see Counselor Valentino keep doing her job there, if she gets elected and.
Thank you. Any other counsel comments?
I just want to point it out, tonight, counsel, the voters not here. Let's say. All of us do stick together and voted against it, is that going to be defeat, what's what can we happen?
Then we don't have a representative goal to AMM possibly.
Maybe it's a time to share the message, thank you.
Yeah, any other counsel?
Counselor Fountain has his hand raised.
After one, there's a time that we're going to agree, and there's a time for one of this free, make no doubt about it, and. By many, many years of in leadership, I'm going to tell you, anyone that stands up and says. I will run or I will, you know, stand up to the committee is very important, very important. And I think the mayor already stated, if someone wants to run, they can run, we can vote, you know, so in fairness. I will certainly support Counselor Valentino, I did consider it, but I believe she's done a decent job, the only thing is. Cut the reports to about half, I'll be okay. They're all lending, but all the best in your your election and I'll certainly support the resolution.
Any other counsel?
Counselor Fountain has his hand raised.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I'd support Counselor Valentino and wish her the best of luck. She's the best person for this job, and she's done a great job so far, so thank you and good luck, Kathy.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, it's great to getting all the information back from Counselor Valentino. And who she throws her hat in for. Work again, thanks.
Thank you, anybody else? Call for the question, all those in favor?
I. Everybody.
You were an anonymous.
Well, we have just pulled it out, but you said I have to do that.
Some message, come on. Can I have fun with this?
It's been interesting, there. Eight point four is a reservation requesting meeting with municipal services officer to discuss roles and responsibilities. To municipal administration. Resolution two zero two one zero seven nine, moved by. Counselor Wong, seconded by Counselor Elsward, it resolved that the city of Thompson requests a meeting. With municipal service officers from the Department of Municipal Relations. With the province of Manhole to review and discuss roles and responsibilities and municipal administration, go to administration.
Yes, thank you, worship, um, this one was brought forward basically after some discussions with a number of counselors, as well as a discussion with municipal service officers. There's an offer that they can come and speak with council about any questions they have about municipal governance, about governance structures, different ways that organizations and procedures can take place. They'll answer any questions, they've also watched a number of council meetings and expressed that they have a number of tips or suggestions for council. But to come and meet with council, they actually need a resolution. So this resolution was brought forward to see if council would support having MSOs come and speak and answer any of your questions and provide guidance. Either in person or by Zoom, I believe they're planning to come in person if they're allowed to under the travel restrictions.
Thank you.
Well, the reason I want to move this because I'm a little confused about the wording, I thought it's about administration. Because the way wording that municipal administration. So I kind of misunderstood that, I thought it's about administration, but now after Anthony explained, it's all of us.
Yes.
So now. I don't agree with that because we already have the training beginning of the terms. So how much are you going to cost us for that?
My understanding is that there is no cost to the municipality. That's my understanding, we can clarify.
So. Training is good, I don't care where you get training. But my, you know, I mean, they can answer a question under municipal, and certainly act or work are going to be referred to. But I know myself, I took the time, Mayor Smokey, when you indicated, and I think it needs to come out in the public, I really do, it's not a name camera. It's emails that circulated, you indicated that we should have a special meeting with council. The top of concerns we may not, I'm not a top of specific concerns to them. And you asked us for dates, you put up dates. And. I don't know why we couldn't have met, there's nobody that understands our issues more than ourselves in this chamber, we were elected. This has got nothing to do with bringing anybody in, this isn't a local issue, I don't know how they can deal with a lot of the local issues we got, some of the issues. Because that's kind of the inside, I believe their realm, they may have suggestions, but really to deal with them is a different thing. So I'm concerned that. And I'll be open to it, if they bring them up, absolutely, I'll be, make no doubt about it, because I think it's important. But I still won't think of addresses. But I still won't take it addresses. The many issues that I know personally I brought forward to you. I have sat down with other counselors. I thought we get a lengthy list of issues that I believe that we have as a as a as a city, that if they were. The questions were answered and we look and we work towards. You know, making sure that we're all working together. We could be a better council that represents the city. So I guess my question after all of that is this. When we bring those people in, if it's one, two, or three, are they going to really get into the specific issues that we might bring forward as as the elected body and talking about singler when it comes to I as a council or Duncan or yourself? Are they going to get into those as well?
I know when we had the the meeting before and this and coming in this time, there is two counselors that don't have it. We were able to give examples of what, you know, how do we approach a situation that we have a situation with administration or a situation with each other? That's the kind of thing that they tell us how that we we go about dealing with it properly.
I want to respond to to. You, I hear what you said. You actually, you're not answering. You may not be able to answer, but. There are specific issues. That we need to discuss, specific issues. And my concern is they come and they go, and we still got those issues and we haven't resolved them. That becomes a problem for us. We're we're almost, we're, you know, within a matter of another few months, we'll be three years in this term. And I think there's a lot of value added. To bring in a guy that Bernie will be able to send in. That that's not what I'm discussing. I'm very concerned about, are we going to get in? So if I bring up issues in front of those people that is really dealing with Thompson. People will be uncomfortable with that because there's other people in the chamber. How do we deal with that? Or are we going to have another meeting just amongst ourselves? Like, that's what my concern is. I hope you understand.
We, I did put out to have a meeting. Nobody could all meet at the same time and that. Then I had some concerns that that the meeting without some structure was wasn't going to work. So then when municipal affairs offered, I figured we'll do this first. If there's still a need for us to have a meeting after, I am definitely open to it. Tammy? The city manager has a sound up and so does counselor Valentino. Okay, with city manager first.
Yes, your worship. This meeting will be specifically for council. If council wants to invite administration to a separate one, I believe they would do that as well. But it's basically to talk with council about council's issues. I don't think it would go into the detail of purchasing a certain polymer or tractor. We're not going to discuss it at that level. They're going to discuss about the issues and problems, processes that council sees with either how council's running with administrations, the city writ large and interpretations of the municipal act, the planning act, whatever other acts that a council would like to discuss with them to understand the differences in in the roles of responsibilities between all the different people who play a part in the city.
And thank you. Andre?
Yeah, Council Ellsworth nailed it on the head there. I think. I'm always up for some training. I actually would really look forward to this, but he definitely need to to. Get our, I guess you call it internal issue, if you want to call it, dealt with. And if they can assist with that, that's great. But if we need to have two meetings, I'm down for two meetings also. We're all here for the right reasons and I think that if we can get help and we can meet and get through it, whichever we can, then it's better. So sooner the better. So I'd be in favor.
Kathy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smook. I'm definitely in favor of this. I think we can always try to improve on how we do things. I think a key point to me is our city manager saying that they did watch a few of our city council meetings and have offered now to provide us with with a little bit of training. So I think that there must be a need there and I definitely would look forward to them coming sooner than later. Myself also, and I'm definitely supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Lomark has a sound up. Okay.
Yeah, I'm supportive. This sounds great. A little refresher is always good. Drives things home and, you know, there's a whole pile of things they taught us when we first started that. Maybe it's slipping a bit and I'm thinking that it would help our two newest counselors and myself. I'd like a refresher. Makes things run smoother and hopefully helps us out. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm in support of any training because I'm probably the one with least knowledge here. But, you know, what I can see here is what's the problem? You know what you have to do? You nominated people to your committees, this and that. They're not functioning. What is the problem? You're saying we're not doing our job. But we're here, we're doing our job that you put in place to do. I got no community side, but you put me in that. And so, you know, I I support any training. I agree, we got to get our personal things out or our council things out. And but, you know, me, I go to your phone.
Thank you. Oh, any other comments?
Yeah, now I know what's all about, so I have no problem with another training. But just the curiosity, because you brought it out about the, you set up a three day for us to meet together. And pretty much everybody responds. I was wondering, we cannot make it.
I, there was, the most I had was six counselors that could go on any one night. And I didn't have a comment that if not, everybody could go then they weren't. So that would have been taken away another one or two. So then after we had done that and it didn't work out on the date, so that if everybody wasn't going to be there, then we had a couple of meetings here. Municipal Affairs was in contact with us saying that they had some points and I'm figuring maybe it's better we listen to them first. So then we have more of an idea of our roles and responsibilities moving forward.
And I responded. I think somehow we are elected official of Thompson. We can be a leader of this. I think somehow we have to make another arrangement. It's another effort to set another date before we go to that. Because if we cannot show our own leadership, we need someone to tell us how to do things. I have a problem with that. I mean, we should have the step step up and do as a leader. Let's try another date and see how it's going. Why they cannot commit, what's happening? You know, I mean, if we can make effort to come to this, we can have a effort to come to your request. That's my point. I I think it's just making excuses. So I don't buy that.
Well, I would, I definitely think, yes, we are elected for Thompson, but we are part of the whole municipal agreements. We have our rules that we have to follow in municipal act. So we can't just go and always make Thompson rules. So we do have to.
I would bring this with me. This is act with me all the time.
Earl?
I, I agree. We got to what? I don't know. We got to. What's the word? Well, we got to figure out our own problems first. I think we see you as a mayor, you should call meeting, leader of this council, call meeting and say, okay, everybody make this big. Do what you gotta do to make this big. Now that's true leadership. And what worry as a council that we make that because you did it. So then that's more power to you.
Well, obviously, I don't have that power because I already have two counselors that refuse to sit on committee. So I do feel we do need municipal affairs to come and lead us through this again. Yes, Tammy?
I was just looking to see if we can speak to the resolution and that's to request a meeting with municipal service officers. I mean, it might not be till November. Who knows? But that's the resolution. And I'm supporting the resolution and I'd like to call for the question. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Yes.
Actually called for the question. We have. Isn't that municipal rule? Yes, once somebody calls for the question, then we have to vote.
Just for.
Call for the question. All those in favor of this resolution?
But.
You're gonna, you're gonna ask.
Council Fountain, are you in favor?
I believe that councilor should have the right to speak. I don't believe that anyone should be able to call the question before people have had the opportunity to voice concern or support for this matter. I'll be abstaining on those grounds. Thank you.
Thank you. So, polls? So it's, it passes. Thank you.
If you don't have a full complement, all of council. At the, for this meeting, they don't cancel it. I'm just asking, you, you, to your credit, to your credit, to your credit, you tried to get a meeting with the elected body. Some of them don't think it's important enough to come when the mayor calls for that meeting. That was a very important call. Again, I'll show off if I'm going to bring people in. What happens if they don't? What's the risk? Either we are a team or we're not. And I'm I'm very concerned. I'm okay with the training. That's not why I'll post it. That's not what I'll hold it. Concerned that we didn't work up the details. I'm not getting into. We've already debated it. I'm just saying, are you as the mayor of this city, if you do not get, and I want to challenge you, to send out an email to every counselor when you have a date? And that they all say yes, and that they don't cancel the meetings because they're not, they're not into it. They're not into the game. And I, for one counselor, I'm tired of coming to standing committees and we can't even get the people that's appointed by you to show up. It's a dysfunctional standing committee and a dysfunctional council in my opinion.
Eight point four. A resolution requesting a meeting with municipal services officers. Oh, I'm sorry, that's when we just did. Where are the bylaws? Nine point one, the second reading of bylaw two zero one two two zero two one zoning member by law accessory. Two zero two one zero eight zero. Moved by Andre approved, seconded by Earl Colburn. It resolve the bylaw two zero one two two zero two one being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to amend the city of Thompson zoning bylaw eighteen ninety one dash twenty twelve as amended be given a second reading. Uh, good administration.
Yes, worship. This is the one that we just had the public hearing for. I won't rehash the information. As there were no objections to it, council has the opportunity to give it second and third reading at this time. The third reading would have to be a recorded vote.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Fountain has his hand up.
Okay, first, Council Pro was the resolution mover. So he's up first.
Just saying that this is good to see to move forward. This will remove some red tape. That's for sure. So. I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. And move their hands up there. Brian?
No Fountain.
Fountain?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm. I'm pleased to see this change. It'll make things a lot smoother going forward. We pay taxes on property that we're not able to use for building stuff. I find that unfortunate and it's good to see these changes. Of course, for many who have side lots or corner lots, this isn't going to help them, but I suppose we still have the variance option for people like that in my, in that situation like myself. So thank you and I support this.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I am not going to read all the points that Council Fountain made. She's absolutely right on when it comes to to why we need to do it. I know myself personally in the last two and a half years, I've attended many, many of the overview committee meetings where people came with variances. We brought them here for public hearings over and over. You want a foot air or a half a foot air? I think this gives two perks. First of all, a lot of valuable time won't be wasted because we had to deal with it. And secondly, certainly the corner of the property. So I now know straight out that this is, this is what we have and this is what we can have and not coming for the variances. So I'm pleased that it's there as well.
Thank you.
Okay, the only question I have with this, why is it the maximum possible coverage is still twelve percent? Can Anthony give me a little bit of a refreshment? I forgot why you only restricted to twelve percent of the coverage of the class like the the property. Can we go up a little bit more? What is the reason? I I cannot remember now.
Anthony, do you have a answer?
That, I don't have that answer. That's how it was developed under the bylaw. That isn't what is being debated tonight. The maximum coverage isn't what is up for debate. It's the side yards that you're changing.
I I get it. I get it. I just say maybe another thing we can look into to give more more usage for the land, which is like we pay every single inch. We might something use of it. We could. Why stick with twelve percent? Anyway, I'm going to support this for sure.
Okay, feel free to bring that up to DRC as another category. Andre?
Oh, I just wanted to make a quick note on it. I I don't know the answer either, but I do know I have like other properties in other locations and it's the same. So I don't know what it is or why, but it's not just here.
Okay, so it might be something to do with municipal.
Could be.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions concerning this one? Call for the question. All those in favor?
I. Everybody.
And it was very, there was no. Disagreement letter for that objection. We can now go into third reading. Third reading will be an automatic reported vote. Resolution two zero two one zero eight one moved by Duncan Wong seconded by Andre Pro. It resolved that by law two zero two one dash two zero, oh, okay. Two one be given third and final reading and that it now do pass. Anthony?
Nothing further.
Council, I would, Duncan? Uh, any other council? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for the question or reported vote. All those in favor? Um, Mary?
I.
The pastor long, councilor Ellsworth, council over, council pro, council fountain?
Yeah.
Council Valentino, council landmark.
Yeah.
Thank you. And absent is. Brings us to the merit of the board of decisions. These are activities from May eleventh to twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. The Thompson Aboriginal Court meeting was held along with city manager Anthony Guinness and maybe we met with. We had the Thompson Aboriginal Court meeting. Later that day, Anthony and I met with George, George Elliott from MDS Aerotech Space. The Northern Workforce Development Meeting along with council members and administration was on May nineteenth. The budget was presented to the Chamber of Commerce with Anthony and myself and Council Ellsworth was in attendance and Council Pro Regal in attendance at that chamber that day. And then in the evening, later that day, Ms. Andre Braden, Jeff, Anthony and myself met with Nikki Ashton. The Thompson Community Development Corporation meeting took place on May twentieth. And we've had various meetings, either finance, recreation, or community services have been held since then. Anything else from Thompson? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for adjournment. Andre and Earl, all in favor?
I.
Harry, thank you.
Free one. For trial.
So Andre, what? Did you bring it up to Nikki about the table, the resolution? Did you bring it up to her?